All right, let's get the show on the road here. Thank you all for coming out. We have a very aggressive agenda, which you can tell. And is that better? Okay. As you can see, we have a very aggressive agenda. For the people that don't know me, I'm Wayne Talk. If you come to the board meetings, you'll see me as a secretary, but I'm not here representing the board. I just got drew the short straw to emcee this. Anyway, as you can see from the agenda, there are some very important items that we need to cover and that we will be covered by Mark and Bill. And we're very fortunate to have Ms. Ludovic, is that close enough? I'm sorry. From the law firm of Gaylord Merlin Ludovic and Diaz. She is an eminent domain attorney and she will speak to that for us and the Sun Coast. Just a bit of information. There will be a survey coming out to sort of get the temperature of the community as to what, how maybe the board should proceed with an action plan. We're hoping to get a lot of feedback from the community and we need your help and we need your help moving this along. So I'm going to turn this over to the young lady. And are you ready? Okay.
The microphone.
The microphone is yours. Oh, you're first?
Sorry.
Oh. I don't see that.
So I'm going to do this anyway. All right, very good. I normally have a nice booming voice and all that stuff, but how many people are new to this whole process? Don't know anything about Sun Coast, don't know anything about Turnpike, don't know anything about roads. I mean, you drive on the roads, but I understand that. Okay, good. I'm the rookie in the room, so you guys correct me to 100%. Could I have that first overview briefing up, please? Technology, doesn't it make our life easier?
There's a video.
Okay, very good. We got a Zoom audience of 40, so that means we got about 100 folks because I'm looking at this room that's in excess of 60, so that's good. That's a good turnout. That's encouraging for us. For us on this right now, the reason we're here is what we want to do is give you an update on where we are as of today. Things continue to change as it goes on. Yes, ma'am. Yes, I'm Mark Saveska and I'm kind of working in the Roads Committee. It's a, it's a, it's a coalition of the willing right now. And it's kind of where we're going on that one. I was going to get to that here in just a minute, but we're going to give you a little bit on Sun Coast Parkway, Phase 3, mostly focusing on Phase 3A. They're all in little chunks like that. The Florida Turnpike Extension and then our road conditions. Like I said, you drive on those and it is, as Wayne mentioned, our, our desire here is to get that sense of the community in getting some feedback from you on what your preference is, what your understanding is, what your druthers are. And so that we can take that, turn that into providing our input is Pine Ridge Property Owners Association into all the processes that are going on and engage with specific leaders, both those decision makers and those that influence the outcome of decisions. We don't have a lot of time to do it, so we were actually late to need, but we want to start beginning of April on that slide, please. All right, so to answer your question, I'm Mark Saveska. I'm property owner since 2018. Sounds like a long time, but we just really moved here in June, so I'm a rookie. I'm the youngest guy. Well, not, not anymore. We've had someone come in and it's only been here for a short while. And there's my email address if you want to contact me and I recommend that if you have any feedback, any thoughts or anything like that, please exercise this email. The other member of the Coalition of the Willing is Bill Hunter. If you would, please stand up. He's in the back waving right there. He's, he's part of the Coalition of the Willing as well. And I'll tell you right now, help's wanted because there's a lot of work that we have to do and not a lot of time. So those little yellow sheets in the back, please, if you want to help, please let us go ahead and help us out with that. Three key issues. Our focus is obviously on these first two right here. The Phase 3 of the Parkway and the Florida Turnpike Extension. But you know, this is a constant thing. These are urgent, so that's our focus. And if you want to talk about it, this is a sprint. This is a marathon. This is going to go on probably past a lot of us who are here in the room. When I talk about Pine Ridge, though, it's interesting as I started down this path, there's a lot of maps of Pine Ridge. There's internet maps, there's Realtor maps, there's different maps from Citrus County. There's the Pine Ridge Homeowners Association. They all have different boundaries. And so when I talk about Pine Ridge, what I'm really talking about is the map that we use from the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association, because that's kind of where the deed restrictions apply and what our purview is here. And when we represent, that's what we're really representing. You'll notice there's some big holes in that. Slide, please. This is just an overview coming up on some of the things that we're going to talk about tonight. But for those people that aren't completely familiar with where we are right now in these projects, want to give you a brief overview so that you'll be able to understand what's happening as we move ahead. The first one is the, this is the Sun Coast Parkway. I mean, it's blocked up at the top of the menu, but the Sun Coast Parkway, you got Phase 1 that went up to here. You got Phase 2 that basically brought you to the Norville Bryant or 486 out there. Phase 3 Alpha and Lorena is going to help us understand some of that. And then Phase 3 Broad, that's going to go on beyond that. So what you see right here is it has a potential to cut right through the southwest part of our Property Owners Association boundaries on that. So very interested, we're very interested in. There's a exchange that's going to go there as well. There's an interchange. And so there'll be some development that goes on there as well. And it has a potential impact on us as it goes through that property. The kinds of impact that we could see, noise, traffic density, you know, the speed that goes along with the hazards, the encroachment from this interchange right there. And interestingly enough, all the way back to our last presentation on the funding priority for roads, because is the county going to feed, are going to fund feeder routes? Or are they going to fund residential routes? And that tension's going to play out in this as well. Obviously, growth is kind of a neutral thing. If you're a fan of it, that's good. If you're not a fan of it, that's bad. So that's kind of out there. Our property values are probably going to go up. They're going up anyway. But it improves, also improves drive time to the Panhandle and down to Orlando and all that stuff. Or excuse me, down to Tampa and all that stuff as well. So that's kind of it. And when we talk about this, it's really important that we don't confuse this with the Turnpike that's coming up. So when you say Sun Coast, you're looking at what's going up right through the West Coast, probably clipping us at the bottom left corner, the southwest corner of Pine Ridge. Slide, please. As we look at the next slide, this will be the Turnpike Extension. This is a little bit softer. They're still going through some of this. They've already extended the Turnpike out to Wildwood right here. This is Pine Ridge right there. Here's the Sun Coast right there. And they're now looking at four different alternate routes. You know, one that goes all the way north, one that comes up here just north of Inglis, and then potentially two routes that come through across the top of it. So here you see, we're getting sandwiched by both of these, these activities right there. There's likely to be some desire to connect these if they go further or connect them across here somewhere. So there's some potential future impact on that. Now, these are all very soft roots, meaning they haven't been firmed up. I mean, if you run into bad soil, you run into a cultural burial ground. You got an environmental impact of some kind. So this is always constantly changing and the state is going through those processes right now. Lorena's going to help us with that. Many of the same impacts on that. This is the same one. The only one that I don't have listed up here is there's no real interchange from this that impacts us right now. That could happen a little bit in the future on that one. So that just kind of gives you these alternative quarters that are undergoing evaluation by the state right now. Slide, please. All right, a little bit closer to home, the road situation in here. Road condition in Citrus County is countywide, but it's particularly acute in Pine Ridge. And there's some reasons for that. We'll get into that in the last presentation. But again, this is our boundary from the Property Owners Association. You can see there's some things missing like, you know, Black Diamond, for example, on a Realtor map or on a city map or a county map that's part of Pine Ridge, but it's not part of Property Owners Association. That's just one spot. And you see that the road conditions there. Green is good, yellow, okay. Red is bad. All right. The sweet spot for repaving is right here. It's six and seven. But when we get to Pine Ridge right here, 84% of them need repaving. And I have to put an asterisk up there because what we haven't done is deconflict, deconflict the map. Because what this county calls Pine Ridge and what we call Pine Ridge Homeowners Association are a little bit different. So this number's going to breathe a little bit as we move ahead. But for us, 141 miles of roads, 717 segments. The county breaks it into segments because that's what they really repave and they focus on. You know, 40%, 46% in the sweet spot for paving, 38% overdue. That's how we get to 84%. Almost all our roads need work. You guys drive them all day long, so I'm not going to tell you anything you don't know already. But here's the alarming part right here is nothing's rescheduled, nothing, no repaving is scheduled for us that's coming here. Slide, please. And that's a quick overview so that you can put things and be able to differentiate. When we talk about Sun Coast, that's the thing that goes up the west side. We talk about Turnpike Extension. That's the thing that goes across the top. And then obviously the roads are what we drive on every day. We're going to hold off on questions for right now because there'll be a detailed presentation on all of this and hopefully we'll answer your questions. And if not, we'll have a Q and A session after each presentation. And a commitment from both Bill and I is if you guys want to hang out here after we're kicked out of the building or after the meeting's over and they allow us to have the building, we're going to stay with you because that's our first, the first task is for us to get a sense of the community so that we can go approach those civic leaders and we can go and interface with the processes that are ongoing and begin to influence them in a way that's favorable to the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association. Wayne, to you.
Thank you, Mark. Now, we will go to this young lady and she will talk to us about eminent domain.
Good evening. My name's Lorena Ludovic. I am an eminent domain lawyer with the law firm of Gaylord Merlin Ludovic and Diaz. You can go one more, please. So you know, the next one too, please. Eminent domain is the power of the government to take property. They have to do it under the constitutional requirement of paying full compensation. So at the end of the day, what I am doing is helping people get through the condemnation matter and helping them to achieve full compensation, which basically boils down to a 12-person jury trial who is answering the question of how much? How much did this property owner receive as compensation? The property's being taken. So I'm going to talk to you about several things here. First of all, there's a couple of slides we have repeats on, so we'll go through them quickly. But this condemnation or eminent domain, it's already starting. When you see design work happening, that's all building for the eminent domain case because they have to put on certain testimony in order to take people's property. So this is the corridor and you all are located. So you have the Phase 1 that is under construction and then Phase 2, which is this three-mile segment up to 486. That construction's starting this spring, so that comes right up to your back door on 486. That's going to end with the entry and off ramp to the southbound lanes and northbound up to 46 for the Sun Coast Parkway. There's going to be a lighted intersection just down the road on 486. So that's all they're going to build right now. But in the next two years, they are going to be designing the next phase, which is from 486, Phase A. There's going to be an interchange at 495 and then go all the way up to red level where there'll be a partial cloverleaf interchange at that point. Next slide, please. So what's the goal here? The goal is to create connectivity to the hotspots in the area. It's population, it's industry. And so what this map actually shows is where your top five largest employers in the county are. And you can see where they are along here. This is your Sun Coast, which stops at 44. The extension all the way up to red level, okay? You can see the red dots. So what, what the Sun Coast is doing is trying to make some of this connection. But as Mark had also explained, there's more connection needed and that's from Wildwood out because there's way too much traffic on 95 and I-75, which are Florida's only northbound corridors. So if you could hit the next button, please. So that's where you see these connections coming in. So it's a study that they're doing. It turns into a planning, design and engineering study. And once they study, they have to look at five factors. They have to look alternatives, cost, environmental, safety, several factors. Once they evaluate all the factors, they pick the most favored alignment and they go to public hearings on it. That process is just beginning, so this is years out. Go to the next slide, please. And there's going to be more discussion on that, so I'm not really going to get into it as much. Open you back up. There you go. So where we are, this phase right here, this is the end of Phase 2. Like I said, that's starting construction now. They're acquiring right-of-way right now. I have hearings that have been set all this, this last couple of months on this phase. The next phase, this is three miles. The next phase is 10 miles going all the way out. Right-of-way for Phase 3A, which is what you all are in, up to 495, that right-of-way is scheduled to begin in 2024. So, and I just had a call today from somebody over off of Dan Ellen, which is by Highway 19. He already has received a survey letter saying, hey, DOT is wanting to come out and survey my property. So they are surveying, they're out there right now. So you're going to start seeing a lot of activity because they're out. They're trying to figure out the design. They've got to adjust their right-of-way. As Mark indicated, you know, if they're hitting an Indian burial ground, they're going to adjust it one way or the other. So everything that I show you today is subject to the study being done for the design. Soil borings, if they can hit a bunch of melt by shifting over a little bit, they're going to miss it. So that's what's going on. Right-of-way acquisition. That means they're coming out, they're making appraisals of people's property to make them offers. That will start in 2024. So this is really, really fast in the world of eminent domain. Next slide, please. So what's happening? This, these are concept plans. And I have them, I actually brought a couple of printouts with me. If anybody is feeling their impacted or want to see this without it being up here. And this is kind of hard to read because I kept it the way it's printed. But actually, north, as you can see, is kind of pointing in this direction. This is 486. This area right up here is the beginning. This is y'all's neighborhood right here. This is the south side. This is Phase 2, okay? So it continues on up along the Duke Energy Corridor. And as you can see, there's lanes of traffic. And then on the northern, well, it'd be the western side actually, is a bike path or a multi-use trail. Next slide, please. Then it continues, notice the north arrow up in the top of the slide. It continues and crosses 495 where you can see this interchange. All right. So right now, that's the tentative design for the interchange at 495. Continues on along the Duke Energy Corridor. And next slide, please. And then the final map shows where it ends. And here we go. It crosses over the Duke Corridor and then comes up to 19. There's a partial cloverleaf. And because there's a limited access needs for the on-ramp, they have to move the entrance of Dan Ellen Road. So they're shifting that further stop on 19. So the folks along Dan Ellen are going to see a condemnation as well. So these are the concept plans that we have right now. This down here basically shows the elevations where the bridging would occur. So you can see where it kind of undulates. It goes up, bridges over, comes back down because they're going over some of these roads. Okay, next slide, please. So this is a typical section. You go down, drive down Sun Coast Corridor. It looks like this. Well, this is probably greener and prettier, but this is what it looks like. The two main lanes, two lanes each side. And then you have the multi-use path, bicycles, whatever. And, and then you have the drainage areas and the fencing. Next slide, please. So this is the slide I wanted to get to you guys with because this is, this is where you guys are. So I turned that map, which was kind of awkwardly directed so that it's very much in line with this map. This is Norville Bryant Road, 486, right? This down here on the south side is the end of the Phase 2 project and what is being taken. The area in red is what is being taken. Actually, this is a pond over here. So project will stop here. The next phase that's going to impact y'all's neighborhood starts and goes north. So this is the path. It's extra wide here because this is an on-ramp coming on. It's extra wide here because this is the off-ramp coming down, okay? You can see that in these plans up in the upper right or left of the screen. This is the ramp, the on-ramp going northbound, the southbound ramp, and then this yellow piece right here is the, the multi-use path. Pine Ridge is right here. Where, I don't see the cursor. Okay, right here. So Pine Ridge on this map and Pine Ridge on this map. And so when you move over to where the project's taking, it's right here and it goes up, okay? Does everybody understand that? Okay, so these properties, this is actually a plat map of y'all's neighborhood. So you can see all the different property ownerships being impacted, which isn't shown on their concept plan. But if the concept plan stays as it is, then those are the properties that will be taken. Again, they have to finish their design. And, and once they get about 60% completed in the design, they start preparing right-of-way maps, which shows exactly how much property is taken from each owner. Next slide, please. So we are in the eminent domain process now and it's called pre-suit activities. They're already contacting my clients and saying, hey, we want to come out in the property. And I tell all my clients, listen, I want the letters. I want to know who's out there because later on, two years down the road, when I'm wanting to take a deposition, I don't want to have to figure out who was back at the property two years ago doing the soil boring. I've got the information. So I tell all my clients, we're in this now. You need to keep track of everything that comes to you. Give it to me so that I know who I need to depose if that issue comes up. So staking and surveying, that's happening. Like I said, I just got that call today, notification letter for a survey. A lot of people say, well, I don't want these people on my survey. I mean, on my property to survey. There are state laws that actually allow surveyors to go onto private property because you can't survey one person's property without stepping on the other person's property. It's a property line. So there's laws that protect surveyors from doing that. So it's something we really can't fight over. If they damage your property in the process, they have to pay for it. There's also going to be property inspections by appraisers. I told you, the issue at the end of the day is how much? How much did the jury award you? Well, it all begins with the appraisal process. The, the Florida Turnpike, by the way, I do want to go back and state one thing. The Sun Coast Parkway is a Turnpike Enterprise project, just like the Wildwood Extension is. So a lot of people get confused when they hear Turnpike. So no, this is Sun Coast. Sun Coast is the name of the project. The entity doing the project is the Turnpike Authority. So it's just two of their projects that are impacting you all. So anyhow, property inspections, appraisals are done. Once the appraisals approved, and for you guys, it should be sometime in 2024, they will submit those to a right-of-way agent and the right-of-way agent will make an offer to the owner being impacted. There's negotiations, once that offer's made, that can, that can ensue. And we can negotiate money. We can negotiate driveway cuts, maybe extended possession if they're impacting a home to have those people move out at a later date closer to the time of construction. Of course, moving costs, relocation of animals, above-ground pools. There's a lot of things that, that are negotiated at this stage. I believe this is going to have federal funding. So when there's federal funding, you also are entitled, the people whose property is taken are entitled to recover relocation benefits from the Federal Relocation Act. So, and that gets into your moving costs. Okay, next slide, please. So I've mentioned, we have the design, right? Design's done. They've prepared the right-of-way maps. They've sent those to the appraisers. The appraisers did an appraisal, goes to the right-of-way agents. The right-of-way agents contact the owners, make an offer. We try to negotiate, can't come to a, an agreement. So now they exercise the power of eminent domain. That is the power to take your property. But because the Constitution says they cannot take your property without payment of full compensation, they have to deposit into the court registry that appraised value, okay? That time, well, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself. There's an order of taking hearing that's set once they file suit. We all go to that hearing. They have got to prove three things, that they've made a good faith estimate of value, that the property they're taking is for a public purpose, which the road corridor is pretty much a public purpose. You can contest public purpose more when it's for parks and things. And that your property is needed for that purpose. They cannot take any more property than what they need for the project. So once you have the order of taking hearing, if they've proved those three elements, they get title. So it's kind of an automatic thing. They could have a deficient appraisal or we might not agree with it, but it doesn't matter because this is just an interim deposit because the jury's the one that awards full compensation, not the judge. So if the judge finds that they've, they've sustained those three points and the only way you can fight them is to show fraud or abuse of discretion, which is very difficult to do, they'll get title. Title will transfer, not by a deed that you'll sign in a regular real estate closing. Title will now transfer by court order. And it transfers on the date they deposit that good faith estimate that they made from the appraiser into the court registry. Then you have the right to withdraw that money subject to claiming more money in the condemnation case. So, so that's, that's the process of them getting title. And what this advanced acquisition does and why they're able to get titled before we've settled the case with them is because they've got project deadlines. And they will lose federal funding if they can't keep moving. So, so they need the ability to get the property and deal with the compensation at a jury trial later on. And of course, with the pandemic, jury trials got delayed by, you know, 18, 24 months. So, so that's been an issue. So they've got title, though, and they can move forward. Once there's a transfer of title, if we can't get it resolved, we continue on to mediation. Next slide, please. If we can't get it resolved at mediation, then you have a trial to determine how much money the property owner should receive for that which is taken. And if there's a remaining property left over, say they don't take the entire tract of land, then the property owner can also recover the decrease in value to the remaining property. The, the, the jury trial, I mentioned, is a 12-person jury trial. In the state of Florida, property rights are so highly regarded that there's only two times that you have a 12-person jury. That's an eminent domain case and in a capital case when they're taking your life. So those are the only times you'll ever see a 12-person jury. So I've talked a lot about the appraisal and depositing money. Who's going to get the money? Well, it's going to be the property owner. It could also be the tenants, depending on leases that you have drawn. So early on, when I get hired in an eminent domain case, I'm like, okay, I want to see your lease because you might not want to renew that lease with those clauses in there with the tenant because the tenant gets to share under certain circumstances in the landowner's award. So of course, your lender. Most of your loans are going to be institutional loans and they're going to say in there that if there's any condemnation money, it goes to pay off your principal balance first. If there's judgment creditors or liens on your property, they will have, they'll be wanting to withdraw that money out of the court registry as well. Your taxes, per-read taxes for that portion of the property gets paid off. And, and easement holders. So if, if they take your property, but you had somebody else's driveway going across your property as an access easement, that person's entitled to compensation. So there's a lot of elements to it, especially if you have a property that's got a lot of interest on it, such as tenants or easements and what have you. I was asked about the, the Homeowners Association and if they are able to recover. That would be, that's very contract-based and that would depend upon how the contract and the deed restrictions and the declaration. There's case law that has gone both ways on that. Really, it's a, it's a very factual analysis to, you have to read that. You just can't answer that point blank. Next, next slide, please. So this is the Constitution. So this is the constitutional um, protection for the people in the state of Florida, very similar to the United States Constitution, which is no private property can be taken except for public purpose and um, without compensation, it can't be taken without compensation. So um, so that is why um, property interests are so highly regarded and why you have that twelve-person jury, because this is in our constitution. It's your protection um, as a property owner in the state of Florida. And what we have done in the state of Florida, because if you have to go and take that compensation for your property and turn around and pay a lawyer one-third of what you recovered for your land, just to make sure you can recover it, then you're really not getting fully compensated. So our Supreme Court of Florida, and this is only in a handful of states, United States. It's not like this in every other state. In Florida, we say that in order to get full compensation, your attorney's fees and your expert fees have to be paid on top of this. And because your taxpayer money is going to pay the government to take your land, your taxpayer money ought to go to help you defend it. So you're able to recover from the condemning authority attorney's fees and expert fees. So these landowners who have their property taken don't have to go out of pocket to pay the, for their lawyer in these situations. So I tell my clients all the time, like, when do you ever get a free lawyer? So take advantage of this. All right, next slide, please. So what they must take and pay for. I told you the value of property taken. If they take your backyard and your swimming pool but leave your house, that doesn't mean they just have to pay for your backyard and your swimming pool. You've got a house now sitting ten feet away from a right-of-way. That's lost its value. So that's what we're talking about, damage to remaining property. Or they could have taken your house and just leave you with your front driveway and mailbox. That's not worth a lot. So, you know, they have to pay for that. We call that a wipeout. Even though they can't take more, remember, they can only take what they need for the the um, project. They'll have to pay for it. They pay for your reasonable expert cost. They've got their appraiser. You're entitled to have your appraiser. Attorney's fees, I mentioned that. Relocation expenses. Again, that's under the, there's a lot of federal act on that. So it really depends on your particular situation. There's relocation expenses for business relocation as well as for residential relocation. I don't know how many of you all are involved in a business that might be taken, but um, business damages do not have the protection of the Florida Constitution. It's a different animal. They don't have property rights. It's a statutory claim that you can make, but it's construed against the business operator. So it's very difficult to make those claims. You've had to have been in business for five years. There has to be a partial taking. It has to be a taking from certain condemning authorities. So if Duke Power Lines come and take your property, you don't get business damages from them. You do from DOT and the Turnpike Authority. You don't get them from school boards if the school board takes your property. So business damages, you have to meet the elements of that. And there has to be a partial taking. For some reason, our legislators thought that, you know, you should only get business losses if there's a partial taking, but if they come in and wipe out your entire business, you don't get business damages. It doesn't make sense, but that's the way the law's written. Next, next line or slide, please. Okay, so a lot of people say, oh, my, my, it's becoming inconvenient to get to my property. I've got a median. I don't like this median or they're shutting off this access. I got to go around this way. It's it's just inconvenient. Damages caused um, by construction inconvenience or by the placement of a median and pre-existing right-of-way, those are not compensable. So if, for instance, they closed up um, Norvell Bryant Road Turnin', you could not get damages as an association for a roundabout. I'm not saying that they are. Right now, the plans don't go all the way out to y'all's roadway. So I think you're all safe. I think they're going to keep the medians right where they are. They're just um, they're adding an opening. Actually, there's already an opening there where Noel Road crosses and where they're adding the new interchange on the south side. Next line, please. Okay, okay. Okay, so um, I tell my clients all the time, be careful what you say. If any of y'all are, have been worked in the um, police department, law enforcement, you hear it all the time on TV shows, anything you say can and will be held against you in a court of law. You hear it all the time. Eminent domain is a proceeding in a court of law. So when you saw the red line with the little boxes of different ownerships, they, the Turnpike, the appraisers, the surveyors, all have a parcel number itemized out. So whenever they have a communication with the landowner, it goes in this communication log. With the right-of-way agents, appraisers, doesn't matter what. So if you ever say anything to them that they could use against you later on in the valuation of your property, you best believe you're going to hear about it. I had a client out in Ovita when they were widening Tuscaloosa Road twenty years ago. I wasn't hired yet and the appraiser came out to do the inspection and he said, this property is beautiful. Oh, my gosh, what do you think it's worth? And my client said, I would jump for joy if I could get two hundred and fifty thousand out of it. I go to mediation and my appraiser says the whole property's worth three hundred and fifty. I didn't find out about that statement until I was at mediation. When I heard that, I was like, oh, my gosh, I wish I've known this sooner. But those kind of statements then undermine, because now you can see what they get to say to the jury. They get to say, listen, this landowner thought his property was worth two hundred and fifty until he got his hired guns, his hired appraiser, and now he says it's worth three fifty when he really thought it was worth two fifty. Jury awarded him two fifty. So you'd never want to say, and you don't want to give information. There's public hearings coming up. I think it's set for this October. When you guys put uh, the comments down, if you say anything about valuation of your property in those comments or get up and speak into a microphone that's being tape recorded, they've got you on record. So please, 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 if anything you take away tonight, please be careful what you say to um, to anybody on behalf of the condemning authority. I tell my clients, if anybody contacts you, you send them to me. I'm your voice because anything I say can't be used against them. So that's a protection I afford my clients early on because I I don't want there to be any what's called admissions against interest in in the case. So and that's what a declaration against interest is. And um, be careful what you ask for. You might ask for something early on at one of these public hearings and they go out of their way to create a a different path or do something in their design. If it ends up messing you up, you're stuck with it. So you, you know, you have the opportunity to have an engineering um, company to help you. So if you think you want to try to have a different kind of driveway or, because it's just not looking at a map and looking flat, you've got to know what the elevations are. And this lady right here just asked about elevations. That is so important. Because um, a lot of times people think, well, it's going to be this flat road. No, it's going to be about twenty feet above your property and there's going to be tolls going through and people braking and and gassing. And so you don't really know until you look at, not just the plan view, but you got to look at the cross-section and how they're building it and what the elevations are. And that's sometimes it's hard to figure out on your own. So I just say, be careful, again, going to those public hearings and stuff and and asking for things because it might not be something you really want. Next slide, please. Did I take out my timing? Go to the next slide. I might have, is that it? I might have accidentally deleted my slide on timing, but I can tell you anyway what it is. We've got design in twenty, for the next two years. Then in twenty twenty-four, there's going to be a um, the the appraisers are going to be hired. They want to have this project under construction. It's either twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Now, phase three B is running about a year, two year and a half behind three A. So they're going to get this phase done first and then finish up with the next phase in a year and a half to two years later. I I think it's October twenty-second is going to be a public hearing. And I can double-check that. But October, and you'll get notice of it too. But um, that will be the public hearing where they bring out what they're doing and take public comment. And it's after they've got their design done so that they can show, they'll have big boards in the room, big boards in the room that show what they're building and there'll be right-of-way agents at each one of those boards to answer questions. You can find your property and point to it. Be real careful what you say. You can ask questions, but um, when you start making comments, I'm telling you, they're they're writing down what you say at those public hearings. So anyhow, um, did I not have the timing on there? There was a slide that gave all the dates, but um, but I just ran through them anyway. So. Okay, I must have accidentally deleted them, but we're good. All right, well, am I doing, are we doing public or questions answered now or at the very end? Okay, all right, questions? I'll try to repeat it. Okay, yes. Phase three. Yeah, phase three, it's going to be, it's elevated over Noel and it stays, oh, is the road going to be elevated when it gets into Pine Ridge? And the answer is yes. And if you could go back to that first slide where it showed the concept plans, actually, yeah, would be the first slide. There you go, right there. Went too far. I can show you. It's on the bottom of the screen. And I have these, I printed out. So if any of y'all want this um, information, go back more, just the screen part. There you go. Okay, so this is like tracking down and you can see where it comes down. It's going to go, let's see, where are we? North, okay. So here's Noel Road. So we're going to be flat right as you go past four eighty-six. It's coming downhill. And it goes back up somewhere in this area. I I can't tell you where it is. But there's a portion of it that's going to come down because it's got to go over four eighty-six. All right? It's also going over Noel Road just to the south. So it bridges here. It's going to bridge there and you, there's actually a notation on it. It says N Bridge. That's where you know there's a bridge. And then it comes back down and then it'll go back up again. Um, Begin Bridge. See this? And then M Bridge. So it's going over that road, which is Red, Reynolds Avenue. So it's bridging over Reynolds Avenue. So those are the high points in your neighborhood that we have on this. And when you look at these maps, you could, if you start looking for those, Begin Bridge and M Bridge, you can pretty much follow where the the um, bridges are going to be. There was another question. Yes, sir. If you've been running it for five years, there's a whole statutory. Oh, can you get business losses if you're running your business out of your home? The definition of business is where your activity and your, where the activity of your business is. If it's just um, sending out emails, that might be a little bit harder to prove. So you've got to have the generation of business and the the physical activity on that site. So and then if you do qualify, you have to submit five years of your um, business tax returns, your five years of your P and L's and um, there's a whole litany of documents that you have to submit in order to make a business damage claim. If you are eligible for a business damage claim, you know, I told you, you're going to get notice letters. You're going to get a notice letter either before or right when you get that offer for the appraised um, value, right? If you have a business, they'll also send to you a notice to business owner. Both of these are sent certified mail. When you get that notice to business owner, remember, I told you the law is very onerous on business operators, right? Basically, if you get that notice, they're not going to offer the business any money. They put the burden on the business owner to to cough up all their federal tax returns and all their documents. And within six months, they've got to submit a business damage claim. If you do not submit that claim within six months of getting that notice to business owner, you're out of the claim forever. So it's something you don't want to ignore. You don't want to throw away your certified mail when it comes to this project because those have important timings on it that you can waive. That's a good question. Um, yes. Well, if you work, if it's your business and you got the, okay, if you work from home, it doesn't mean that that's your business. Let me give you an example. I I do public supermarkets work. Public supermarkets business is running grocery stores. But they're also owning a shopping center, right? And part of their business is um, collecting rent from all the other tenants in their shopping center. Well, you can have a road widening that clips off the first two tenants from their shopping center. They don't get that business loss because they weren't collecting the rents and the energy of their business wasn't happening at that shopping center. They get the grocery store business loss, but the loss for the rentals wasn't happening there. That's happening over in Lakeland. So you have to fall within the definition of business. Okay? Even some of these salvage yards, there's issues about, well, that's just storage of salvage. That's not really the operation of the business. So should they get business damages? And we fight over that a lot. So it really depends upon, there's no clear-cut answer on business damages. It really depends on the business and the activity and what's happening at that site. So I would just say, you just need to talk to your lawyer about that. And then if you guys can prove the case, then then yeah, go for it. Yes, sir. Okay, that's a very good question. I get that a lot, especially, um, yes, I will. And that's, this happens especially with virgin road corridors where you're not widening a pre-existing road. The question was, um, what about those of us who don't have a taking but were right up next to this facility that's going to depreciate our value because, you know, there's noise, fumes, dust, um, all that kind of stuff, lights? You don't get compensation. Florida is a taking state, which means you have to have a taking from your property in order to receive compensation. So if they take right up to your property line and not a foot in, you do not get compensation. And I can tell you, this is a fight that we have fought over and over on Highway nineteen. If you get further down into Clearwater area, you know, those frontage roads? DOT squeezed those frontage roads in without taking any property from those shopping centers or Burger King or McDonald's. They didn't get business damages. But they elevated the roadway, put them on a frontage road. It was horrible. And as you can see, most of those businesses went out of business. But um, don't get business damages or you don't get any compensation for real estate either because they didn't take anything. So yeah, that's a real tough situation. Yes, sir. Oh, that's way out of my, I I have no idea. I'm sorry. Oh, but the question was whether Pine Ridge at some point could be um, considered a major thoroughfare where they, or not a major thoroughfare, where you could go ahead and gate it. I mean, you're you're getting into whether or not um, that road's a private road. Who's maintaining it? Whether you've dedicated it over? I mean, there's a whole host of issues associated with that.
Okay, Dad. Thank you for for insisting that the question is answered. We have a lot of information about what the Roads Committee did on that. And we'd welcome anybody who's interested in that to dive down a little deeper. After the whole thing's over, we'll kind of be in the back of the room. Bring that question to us and we'll tell you what we have found so far. Fair enough? I think you're right. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're going to get into a little bit more detail. Lorena gave you a lot of really good stuff on the Sun Coast. Okay, now we're going to talk a little bit about the Turnpike Extension. This is a little bit softer because they're just in the initial exploratory phase of this. If you could please bring up the briefing on the uh, Turnpike Extension, please. And this is basically what we've learned so far. There is so much that's going on with this and it's very early in the process. So the information that I have, again, I want to emphasize is soft information because that's just the nature of this kind of business. And even though Lorena's talking about, or we're talking about twenty twenty-four when they're actually plowing through there, the impact is happening today. That's why we're backing it up so much so that we have an opportunity to, number one, understand and number two, hopefully influence some of the process moving forward. We may not be able to move a roadway, but we may be able to move, or we may be able to influence an interchange or get into some kind of mitigations of things. There are very strict laws that apply to all these items. And so we have to be very. And, and so we have to be very precise in what we're doing, what we're asking for and, and how we engage with these different business leaders and all that stuff. This is all soft information, but this is the other part that's gonna sandwich us up over in the north, in the north part of us, most likely, slide please. Okay, just a little bit more on, on this, you know, you have, uh, from Wildwood and they want to bring it over, this is the Sun Coast right here. And then our property is right in here, in this area right here, that's where Property Owners Association has their purview right there and, and Lorraine has already talked about this little nick and you already saw how much just that little nick could impact our community. We have one route that's gonna go way up north, all the way up here to, uh, Crestview, if, our, our chief, Chieftains, I'm sorry, uh, up there. And then we have this blue route that'll come over just to the north of Inglis. And there's actually two routes that will potentially come through here, one that comes over all this way and then up along Inverness and then over, uh, to, to some junction most likely on nineteen, but that's all yet to be determined. Lorraine, you've been in, involved in this and so if I say something that is not correct, please correct me to a hundred percent. Same John, are you in here, where, wherever you are? Uh, hopefully John was in here, he was, uh, uh, in the, uh, uh, the Roads Committee before. So that's the impact that's gonna have on us and again, we're right here in this corner, right there. All right, so, uh, those are the four different ones that we have. And two of them basically are gonna go right over the north part along that power line easement, uh, that, uh, exists or, or, excuse me, the power line right of way that exists over on the north edge of our property, slide please. So again, as we look under here, this is the Sun Coast, this is our area right here. And this goes right along the north part of our property. Uh, unfortunately, I didn't have time to put the actual boundaries on it, so the people in the north part of the community, uh, have to pay attention to this. When Lorena said they will go all the way up to the very edge and not impinge on any property and you're just gonna have to suck it up from there, that is probably what would happen if they went through this northern area as it sits right now. Run into some bad soil, uh, environmental impact, uh, anything like that, and that whole line could change. So again, I want to emphasize what I'm saying is pretty soft, but it does potentially impact our property owners along the north part of the property, slide please. This gets a little bit, uh, more precise. Our basic edge of our, uh, of our, uh, Homeowners Association goes basically along, if I get it right, up through here, cuts down and then comes down through here like this. So there's a little bit of a gap, uh, that, that exists. But again, the central quarter and the south quarter in that southern part will go right across the top part of our Property Owners Association. Over here on this edge is probably where they could potentially get closer to our Property Owners Association boundaries. But again, it's all soft right now, so this is what's going through and what we call the central quarter and the south quarter and from practical perspective, uh, not much of a difference from the state perspective or an engineering perspective, potentially a significant difference, uh, for them, slide please. This is the project schedule and when it says we are here, this is an old slide because we're actually right about here right now and you can see there's a lot of things that are ongoing. And what we are doing right now, and particularly Bill and I, is we're, we're trying to make as many public meetings uh, as we can and it's seek first to understand, to know what's going on, uh, uh, of what's going on early in the process. So what we're trying to do is get engaged with, uh, with, uh, a lot of these processes and just a fact finding and understanding what impact this could have on us. Uh, but you see, this right here is a very critical one and you'll see that in our plan of action as, as we go ahead is this, uh, alternative, uh, or the ACR, Alternative Quarter Evaluation Report. You're already looking at us being right here, it's, it's ongoing right now and what we want to do is understand what the, uh, what the report and the study are gonna actually say. Uh, there's a couple of other things right out here and when we get to this point, you know, they're reporting out to the government and the legislature and that's December. So that's when they've already finalized everything and they're saying, here's where we think we want to go. So it's early in the year right now, but all these processes are going on. And then obviously, you know, all the study is complete back out over here after the, the governor and the legislature have an opportunity to make comment or whatever on it. So it's all happening pretty quick within the next year. Not as, I, I, I think, uh, as time constrained is our understanding of the Sun Coast. But still you understand why it is we want to get your feedback so that we can begin engaging in April. And, and, uh, we, as Lorena said, we have to be very precise in what we say and we also have to be very cautious in what we say because we don't want to come in there and say, the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association thinks this is a wonderful thing and then all of a sudden it's not. And, and so we have to be very careful in that, so there's, there's a little bit of latitude. Any citizen can go to these public meetings, you just cannot represent Pine Ridge. You can represent yourself, but you already know the cautions that are put on you. Uh, at a future point, we may encourage you to engage with a county commissioner or with a state legislative mem- member or something along those lines. But, but for right now, just keep in mind the caution that Lorena put out there. Careful what you ask for and you have the right to remain silent. Yeah, you might want to bear those two elements in mind as you, if you choose to engage in any of these activities. Slide please. Uh, there was, uh, uh, another thing that I was gonna talk about on this. Uh, and that's, if you go back to the second slide. Yes, please. Thank you, Keith. Right now, there are not plans to connect the Turnpike Extension with the Sun Coast down in this area right now. But we're beginning to get a hint and Lorena touched on that when she showed you that map with those red dots. And if you can read a map and you can connect the dots, you understand that there's likely to be some more roadwork that goes between this area and this area right there, there's gonna be a strong desire, whether it be from the state of Florida or from the county to connect those dots. That's kind of out in the distance, but that's something that we also have to keep in mind is, is, is we, uh, as we wrestle with some of these issues. So that's kind of a, a quick one over and I don't want to duplicate anything that Lorena did because she did an, I mean, that was wonderful. What, what she did for us, so I'm not gonna duplicate anything that she said, but I would like to open it up for any questions that you might have on the, uh, or comments that you have on the Turnpike Extension, yes, please? Uh, yes, uh, the question that came out was, uh, uh, could, could I, could I offer some, uh, some of the dialogue or some of the, uh, the, the, the going concerns on terms of what the different extensions and, and what might be favored and what not, might not be favored. And, and I'll offer to you right here, these two extensions, and I'm just gonna go from, uh, maybe a more bureaucratic standpoint here, but, uh, the one that goes all the way north and Levi County and up in this area, they are getting a lot of pushback and it's a much more expensive proposition to go this distance and that distance than the shorter distance through here. So if you're a legislator or a planner that's worried about fiscal issues, you're gonna tend to favor something that's a little bit less expensive and it's about half the cost of what goes on up in these, uh, two northern alternatives, quarter, uh, our, our North A and North B versus Central and South, so that's one thing. They're also getting a lot of pushback already publicly from those people in Levi, uh, let, did I say it right, Levi County? Levy County, I'm, I'm new, so please forgive me on this, they're getting a lot of pushback on that from the actual, uh, people that live there and I believe and correct me to a hundred percent again is from of the, some of the county commissioners that exist up there, they're already getting pushed back from that. So that's another piece that is gonna get factored into which of these get selected. Final point on this one is the one that's coming down here, this yellow path through Inverness. Inverness is the county seat, there is already some concern about rooting a large turnpike section through the Inverness area, so as you start looking at it, you start tossing these alternatives out, you're looking at, these are, are, are potentially less likely alternatives, this path, a potentially less likely alternative. So as, as we start looking at the realities of costs and pushback that they're getting from, uh, uh, county legislatures and everything like that, that that quarter, that either the south, uh, the central or south quarter across the top of our Property Owners Association boundary are probably looking more favorable pending anything that we might do and we're not ready to make that statement yet. Hopefully that answers the question, thank you for bringing that out, did I, did I misspeak or anything? Okay, thank you. Yes, please?
Both of the city routes would cross through, so I, I believe that, uh, speaking to the commissioners about, about the investigation that it would cause to allow a common street to build, how it would and fight against that, uh, they're not going to, um, raise anything like that.
Yes. And the, the comment was, uh, uh, these quarters or the central quarters cut through a lot of very pristine environmental or, or, or have potential impact on the environment as it goes through both the, uh, the central quarter and the south quarter, uh, that would go across the top of that, uh, of that area. And we do have an opportunity to engage with our county commissioners, et cetera, to, to, uh, influence that one. But I will say, one of the obligations that Florida Turnpike, or the Florida DOT has to, uh, to, to go through is they have to do an environmental impact statement. And part of that would be specifically addressed, uh, in that environmental impact study and the statement that comes out as a result of that. That could influence what happens with the selection of the, uh, of the, uh, the quarter as well. I'm not that familiar with the rules and laws and everything that, uh, exists down in Florida, but, uh, when you start getting into environmental impacts and if there is a significant challenge or impediment to one of those corridors, uh, the state of Florida is gonna have to look at maybe some other alternatives. Uh, I, I think they've already done some initial exploration on that. Uh, I'm told that they have, but I don't have any feedback on that at all. Bill, you have anything or John, do you have anything on, to add to that?
There, there's a twenty-seven page document that FDOT has created that looks at several different criteria, the environment being one of them. And all four corridors miraculously come out exactly the same. So, um, the, the answer is yes, they have looked at it. But what will be done between now and their selection period is, is what's important. And I'd like, I'd like to clarify one thing. This process that they're in right now will result in a recommended corridor. FDOT will pick one of those four and recommend that as their preferred corridor. That is gonna happen at the end of June this year. So we, we've got, we've got two or three months here, uh, to, to do something and, and we'll, we'll get into that towards the end, but I wanted to make that point. This gentleman has a question.
Pointed out that the legislature requested this study to be done, passed along. Every time I'm driven on the Sun Coast, there's virtually no traffic on it. Do you have any insight as to why the legislature wants this?
Um, the, the comment, uh, or the question was, uh, the legislature of Florida has expressed an interest in the Sun Coast Extension, uh, the, the, the Sun Coast, uh, uh, piece. Uh, and there have been anecdotal observations of, of limited traffic along the Sun Coast. Does that characterize your, your question correctly or your comment correctly? Um, we're starting to get into some, some, some areas where the need to ease the traffic with all the population growth and the traffic that is either here or coming, that, uh, there's a need to ease some of that traffic burden, in particular to get, uh, traffic off the interstate and make the western part of the state more, uh, easier to travel. And that, as the legislature stated, you know, and I think Lorena was, was good in the fact that she said this whole thing is under the Turnpike System, one's called the, uh, the Sun Coast. It's part of the Turnpike, uh, Authority and then there's the Turnpike Extension, two different projects under the same authority. Um, the legislature has stated that the expansion of the, or the, uh, the Florida Turnpike System is in the strategic interests of the state, meaning they're very inclined to move forward with it because they know the population is coming, the population increases here, the traffic density is already going up. I mean, it's gonna be like snowbirds are here all the time is about what it's gonna look like. Even though we may not have the density of traffic, uh, throughout the day that, that, that you observe, there's still that traffic studies that indicate there's a pretty significant amount of traffic on that road. Bill, do you have anything to add? Okay. All right, I'm, I'm getting near the end of my allotted time.
This is Kathy Miller. Yeah, I'm Kathy Miller, um, Levi and Marion have already, their councils have already said no build. And they are working, they're, they're the ones with all the signs and everything and they truly believe that they can do this. Let me tell you, they really believe they can do it. Um, so that leaves us and Chieftain hasn't done it yet. But if you want to get on their Facebook page, get on it because they have so much information. It's, you know, they've tried to do this before and failed, I think this is the third attempt to do it. And they haven't, and the state has not been able to do it. But I, and one of the reasons that Marion and Levi are against it because of all the farms that are up there and the farms that are, they're gonna, and they're gonna take big swatches of their farms, it's absolutely incredible. The whole northern part is just gonna, it's just gonna change. And, um, so if you can get on that, get on that, because they have some really, really great information on that. Um, they want us to join, I will tell you that, they want us to join. Or, and I, I don't know that Citrus County would do that, but they want us to join as a no build. If everybody was on there as a no build as, as much as they are, I mean, they have thousands of people against this. I, I think they said we, they would have a good chance, we would have a good chance of stopping it, so.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to cut off the, uh, the Q and A for this part and right now. Again, our commitment to you is if you want to have further questions and answers or you want to have some discussion at the end of this, uh, at the end of the meeting or you want to stay after as long as they leave us in the building, they don't kick us out and everything else. Just, uh, uh, we'll have those conversations at that time. Uh, a little plug, I'm getting it from Bill in the back, that little yellow sheet in the back, back there, and when I say help wanted, we mean it because there's a lot of work to do and not a lot of time to do it. And we need your help, so anything that you have in terms of ability to, to, to volunteer your time or your, or your, uh, your, your toil on that one, it would be most welcome. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bill Hunter, who's gonna talk about our roads, one of our favorite topics, to Bill.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, good job. Um, now to the boring part. Um, and I'm not near as dynamic as the two earlier speakers, so bear with me. One correction, those little yellow sheets are for anybody that has a question that didn't get answered tonight. Or if you have a question, but you, you don't have the time to stay, write it down, leave some contact information and we will get back to you. We're trying to get an awful lot done in one short meeting, so I apologize. This, this topic is, uh, our roads and as Mark said, the first two topics are imminent, this one is a, it's a marathon. the first two topics are imminent. This one is a, it's a marathon. It's been going on for a while. It will go on for a while. But we want to give you a little more information so you better understand where we are and a little bit of why we're here. Some of you have seen this slide. This is basically Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs. The one on the left, red is bad, red needs to be repaved. Those are the roads that need to be repaved. The one on the right is this year's schedule for repaving. None, none in Pine Ridge. Why? Next slide. Okay, here, here is where we are today. This is from the county's records. This is Pine Ridge. Technically, it's segments, but segments are our roads. So if you just think about this in terms of our roads, the best roads are on your right, condition one. The worst ones are on the left, condition 10. This is where the bulk of our roads are. They're right in there in six to nine. One thing I want to point out, uh, down in the lower left-hand corner, last year, we had no condition 10 roads. I'm sorry, not last year, the last survey, which was two years ago. This year, we have 29 segments that are condition 10. Nine, last year, we had two segments. This year, we have 21. So you see what's happening. This, this tidal wave is moving to the left. It's not getting any better. Next slide, please. This is the same concept, but this is the entire county. This isn't just Pine Ridge. The county's in the same situation. The, the bulk of their roads need to be repaved. In fact, about half of the roads in the county are backlogged. They, they, they're candidates for repaving. Now, at this point, I'm going to take a break. The, all this data is what we've been able to figure out on our own. And it's our best estimates. This is, this is pretty accurate. But I'm going to get into some stuff now that are, are estimates based on what we've been able to figure out. It, it's the best we can do, and it's designed to give you some sense of what's going on and where we are. Someone with better data could point at something and say, that's not accurate. That's, that should be a 20, not a 30. Take it with a grain of salt, but what we're about to show you is kind of where we are. Uh, next slide, please. All right, this is a tough one. I'm a visual guy, and I struggled with this for months trying to figure out, all right, how does all this density and, uh, and, um, uh, the, uh, the worst road condition? Oh, let, let me say some first. The county decides which roads to pave based on the road condition and the density of the area of, of the road itself. How many people are living on that road? So the highest density gets repaved first. And I was trying to figure out how to conceptualize this. So if you will, that's a silo. And that silo is full of about a thousand miles of road that need to be repaved. And the highest density are the smallest lots. And within communities with small lots, the highest density are the parts of the community that are built out. So the built out of the smallest lots is what has the highest priority. The county's pulling off about 40 miles a year to repave. They've been doing that for the last 15 years. They should be pulling off 90 miles. That's how this backlog got created. And if you look at the bottom, there are the one acre lots. And some of you are on bigger than one acre lots. We're at the bottom of this barrel. And if they keep pulling off 40 a, a year and roads keep deteriorating, they are never going to pave our roads. I mean, I'm, don't kill the messenger, but, but that's basically where we are. And we, we've got to figure out something to do with this. Uh, next slide, please. All right, here's what we're up against. Last year, our roads, which are soil cement base, which is part of what we're dealing with, cost about 175 grand per mile to repave. Everybody else's, the lime rock roads cost 110 grand. This year, prices went up. Our roads now are close to costing twice as much as the other roads in the county. And when I say our roads, I mean both Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs, the Deltona roads, if you will. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah, um, I don't, I don't know that, um, I'll go out on a limb and try to. When they made the roads, they bulldozed them, they were all sand, they brought in cement, they mixed the cement with the sand, wet it down, let it set. It was hard cement, paved over it with an inch to an inch and a half asphalt. Now the cement's breaking up. To, you could repave that, and there was, there are a couple of roads here that have been repaved. And two, three years later, it's breaking up again. They have to come in with about a three-inch layer of some slurry that they lay down, that I guess reinforces the underlayment, and then they repave on top of that. And that's why ours costs so much more than others. Thank you. That is a good point. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, here, here are some figures again. Um, the ones on the top are accurate. They have been funding $4 million in 2021, and this budget coming up, they say they're going to improve things. They're gonna, they're gonna go to 6 million. The jury's out. They may not do it. But going to 6 million isn't going to help us. If you do, if their 25-year cycle means 90 miles of roads a year, which requires 13.6 million, 6 million and even half of that. And if you look at all the roads that are backlogged right now in the county, it would take about $160 million to get caught up. And I give you these figures just so you have some sense of how big is this thing and, and where are we? So again, take all these numbers and, and the, those that have agendas have a, a data sheet. Take the dollar figures with a grain of salt because a county engineer could say, now, wait a minute. Those roads are, and, and, and I would love to see them do that because nobody else has done this. Um, but this kind of gives you a sense of where we are. I think that's the last slide. Yeah, it is. Okay, and I think at this point, we are at the Q and A. Art, um, you, second row first, please. Uh, first of all, the, the, thank you. Um, who determines which roads get done and, and what about, uh, the boulevards like Pine Ridge, Mustang, Elcom? Uh, first of all, the county makes all these decisions. Second of all, roads are classified as local residential, minor collector, major collector, arterial. I, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I know that all exists. I don't know what it all is. But the boulevards are considered in a category where the state does help. And we are considered a small county. We're under 170,000 people. So we get help from the state on some of our roads. That's called S-COP, Small County Something Program. County puts in 25%, state puts in 75%. So it's a pretty good deal. And the county also tends to pave the roads that are used most, like the boulevards. So if you're on a little cul-de-sac, you, you don't, you don't get the traffic, and it's not as critical a road as some of the, the other bigger roads. Yes, ma'am. Good, good question. All right. We, we, we asked the same question. We got the answer. Here's the answer. Ah, why was Bonanza paved? A couple of years back, whenever, the, the year that it was paved, the county had this program, and they had, I don't know, 3 million, 4 million to pave. They got to the end of the fiscal year, and they still had, I'll, I'll say a couple hundred thousand left. And they were about to come to the end of the year, and the contractor was done. What are we going to do with the money? Let's go find a road that fits into however much money they had. Bonanza was the road. That's the only reason it got paved is because they could pave that road and still come in $10,000 on the budget. And, and that's basically what happened. I don't know the answer to that. Uh, yeah, you, you, you probably will. Yes, ma'am. Apparently, I didn't get all. And the question is, does the county do traffic studies to see how much volume goes? I think the answer to that is yes, but the real answer is, I don't think they do it for the same reason you, you're, you're talking about. And I really don't know. I haven't seen much ta, heard much talk or seen much data on that. I think they go out every two years, and a gentleman actually drives the road and looks at conditions and has a picture book and says, all right, this road is a six. Uh, every two years, and they do every segment of every road. And our, as you saw from the, from the tsunami, our roads are kind of moving over. And, and sooner or later, our, my fear is, it won't be repaving. It will be rebuilding. And that's a lot more expensive. More questions? Yes, ma'am? Uh, the, the question is, have we presented this data to the county commissioners? I have a longer version of this that actually gets into the financials and shows how over the last 15 years, the number of roads, the miles of roads and, and the pot of money that this comes from and the other things that are coming out, yes. Four of the commissioners agreed to sit with me, and, and I, I went through it with them. The last commissioner has not yet indicated he wants to see it. I think because he, he probably already knows it. The politicians, uh, the, the question was, how'd they react? Uh, very, very good as a politician. Sometimes I thought I was telling them things they didn't know, which surprised me. They should know it. Uh, sometimes I think they knew it, but they didn't want to indicate they knew. The, the, the bottom line is, it's not just us. The whole county has a big problem. And they, they can't, they say they can't find the money to repave the road. Well, they're going to have to do something soon. Questions? In the back. What John says is, is talk about how they're funded and that they don't use the ad valorem taxes. We have been told by some county staff people that they don't use ad valore, or can't use ad valorem taxes for roads, rep, road repaving. And it, it kind of, it's counterintuitive. Um, but I'm not a finance guy, and, you know, they, they apparently have some rule or prohibition. But the truth is, there is a big pot of money in a transportation fund that is filled up with gas tax money and with an ad valorem tax that is on your tax bill. It's a transportation trust fund tax. And that's about 18 million a year. But out of that, they have, um, there, there's a whole series of things they do. The biggest issue is that when they widened 491, they bonded that. And the principal and interest for that bond comes out of this fund. Guardrails come out of this. Repairing bridges comes out of this. Striping roads comes out of this. Uh, there are a lot of things that come out of this, this fund. But the decision over the last 15 or probably more years has been, we're going to keep the repaving amount low and hold down taxes. That, that's, that's a personal opinion of Bill Hunter. Yes, sir? The question is, why, why does Turkey Oaks have a bi, uh, have sidewalks when now they're talking about a bi-vest? I'm asking the same thing myself, because they're probably just going to tear them up. I don't, I don't know who the "they" is. All right, the answer is they got federal money and wanted to spend it. I, I was, when the gentleman asked the question, I was debating whether I even knew where. I think Turkey Oak is still in the county, but I'm not, I'm not sure. You gotta use the mic.
So this is Keith Landers. So this all seems very bad, and it is. So I live on Ranger. We're a seven. I know what our status is. And I don't see any time in the near future they're ever going to pave my road. So our next steps here, just so everybody understands, was what Pete and the rest of the team has been doing, is figuring out all this stuff. Half the problem is, what is the problem? How can you solve the problem until you understand what the problem is? So there's a huge accolade for the team in figuring out where we're at. The next step in this whole process is getting the community to work together to beat the living hell out of the community commissioners, to get them to do the right thing. But the first step was, what the hell's going on? And, and I, and I mean, I honestly, it's taken a long time to figure this out. And I'm very proud of what you guys have done, so I just want to share that, so.
Thank you. And, and with what we're going to do is our next speaker.
Okay, if you could bring up the, uh, action plan, please. Thanks for those accolades. Sometimes it feels like we're getting beat up, uh, because even though we're a messenger and people are trying to be gentle, sometimes it still hurts. So thanks for those positive comments on that one. What we did is, this is a draft, this is tentative. Uh, a couple of things to keep in mind, and I'll go back to some of my earlier comments. When we talk on behalf of the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association, we are not going to do anything without a lot of coordination with the board and understanding and making sure that we understand what property owners are actually interested in. Uh, so that's number one. This is a tentative plan. That's why I call it an initial plan of action, because it's got some milestones on it and some timing where we've overlaid with the two urgent issues. Uh, the kind of the sprint, that's the Suncoast, and that's the Turnpike Extension, where we interface with their, uh, with their processes and trying to find those decision makers uh, and, and engage with them in a timely manner. Some of that is a cooperative exercise. Some of these decision makers, uh, may be a little bit more ambivalent about our situation than we'd like them to be and may not want to meet with us. But thus far, they've been pretty supportive of receiving us as, as we're going, you know, by and large, that's what we're doing. I'm going to go back to a question that was, uh, that was asked earlier, and that's, uh, what was their reaction? And, and the only reaction that really matters to us is, where is the money going to improve what we see is an acute situation in Pine Ridge? Because it really doesn't matter what they say, it matters what they do. I mean, I'm telling you what, what you already know in there, but, you know, when you see this data, it's incredulous. But as Bill pointed out, it's county-wide, particularly acute in Pine Ridge, but county-wide on that one. And we're expensive because of our road structure on that one. But what I'd like to do is, is highlight, going back to, going back to what I said before, we've got a lot of internal work to do with the board, uh, before we go out and reach out, uh, to people. But this is kind of what we're doing right here. The first step is getting a sense of the owners. That's, that's this public forum, talking, getting surveys, looking. looking at, uh, previous work that was done, because there's a lot of great work that was done previous to us getting involved in this. But we kind of have a cutoff here and you'll see it kind of pairs off as we get deeper and deeper in this for two reasons. First of all, because the urgency of the matter dies down. And, and number two, because our ability to actually influence an outcome is going to be diminished as we move towards the right. We've got, uh, two town, or a town hall planned right here and another town hall. That's tentative. Because what we're, one of the things we're going to try to do is see if we need another town hall, because we weren't able to reach out to all the members. If these are the only people that are interested and I salute you for coming out or being online, I'm, I'm glad that you're here, but we may not have gotten everybody. So, talk with your other neighbors, talk with your other friends to see if we need another town hall. And that's the input, and inputs that we'd like to get from you, because we'd like to keep that out there. The, the value of a dialogue versus just looking at some minutes is, is immense on that one. Then we're going to have opportunities, and I figured about every other month where we either come back to the board and describe to the board where we are, what's changed since the last meeting, or solicit input, or say, here's what we want to say and get that approval and make sure it's good with the audience and the, and the homeowners. And I figured one in April and about every other month. That'll be as needed. So, again, a notional on that one. We're going to send out a survey. We've got some internal work to do to figure out how we're going to craft this survey, but we're going to send out an electronic survey. Again, I encourage you to engage with your neighbors and your friends that live in Pine Ridge to have them answer that, because we really do need that sense of the community. When Bill and I go out there, we have to represent you, not our own personal desires or anything like that. As best we can, we need to capture that sentiment from you on that one. That's got to be done within about a month so that we can begin influencing at the beginning of, uh, of April. Uh, we've already started engagements. And when I say engagement, that's just us going out and introducing ourselves. It's surprising when you go out and talk to a commissioner, one of the people from, uh, F, uh, Florida Department of Transportation, you just reach out and shake your hand. And one of the first questions they ask is, where are you from? You say Pine Ridge. That, they track that. That means something to them. So, just the fact that we're out there, I go, I'm just out here to, to gather information, not anything like that, but they're tracking that. They, they make a note of that. But once we get into April, it's hot and heavy. And this is going to be the bulk of the work that we have to do. And this is what we have to influence. These are the near-term ones. As you see, the Sun Coast, the process for design, by the end of, uh, March, we're about halfway through it. And their decision point is in towards the end of June. They say, they say tentatively at that point, it could breathe a little bit either way, but as you, as, as I indicated before, we're late to need, but we do need to get, number one, the feedback and understand what's happening from them, that insight, but also having our preferences identified to them as best we can. Careful what you ask for. Be cautious. Be precise. All of that has to line up, uh, as we influence this. And then they're going to have a public meeting. And that public meeting, some people say, oh yeah, that's when you voice your, 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 uh, your concerns or what your preferences are. Way late. You know, you're, you're right there. They've already made a lot of decisions, if not all the decisions, and all they're doing is making you feel good while they're ignoring what you really want to have happen. So, that's why we have to engage shortly. The Turnpike Extension is a little bit more, uh, it, it is a little bit longer, but you see, this alternative quarter report ends at about the same time. It hasn't quite started yet, so we'll be able to influence it earlier on in its process. But this is, this is where it's going to be. And so, you see, Sun Coast and Turnpike Extension, largely, most things are established at that point. And the things that are going to change it are this engineering and environmental analysis and environmental impact. When you get out here at the public meetings, you're way late for that. You're way late for that. And then you come out here and where the, uh, the, the, uh, the brief to the governor and the legislature, right here, most of the decision, most of the hard stuff is sorted here in, once you get past that point, you're arguing on the margins of the paper. Eh, can I do something a little bit here? Can I do something a little bit there? And the first question they're going to ask is, what's the cost? Because a lot of this, and being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, they're going to be asking a lot about, what's the cost of any adjustment you make? To include the engine, additional engineering costs that, that come along with that. So, we're trying to influence this process as, as, as early as possible, reasonable, given the fact that we are late to need. And I thank you guys for showing up, because it's very important that you're engaged in this, so we have your, your desires reflected in this. This is the one slide and, and that, that I was going to talk about, and I'm going to leave that up there, so you get a sense for the urgency. The roads, there's a budget line down here that I haven't included in this slide. It would have been just too busy. It's, we need to be influencing things right here for the Roads Committee. And I will say this, it's a marathon. As, as Bill said, it is a marathon. It's been going on for a while. It's going to continue in the future. And if we affect change with the very next budget, we're not going to see it for two years. That's just the process. They got to get it in the budget. They got to establish it in the budget. They got to lend the contract. They got to have the contractor come out and start doing work. It's about two years. So, victories that we score today, you probably won't see for about two years, uh, downstream from that. Yes, John, please?
I've had some contact. What's that? Uh, John Hyde. Uh, I had, I've had some contact with the city commissions, commissioners and, and, and got, you know, been at some of the meetings and things. And you have to realize, our city commission is pro-growth. They're looking at economic development. Tax dollars are, are their kind of drug. And they see commercial development as a way to gain those. They also see the Turnpike and the, the Sun Coast is economic engines to help drive that growth. So, you know, if you, if you get the opportunity to go to the meetings and speak, you need to do that. The second thing, and this is the appeal part, we're, you know, Black Diamond's got, got their developers still there. They've got lobbyists. Citrus Hills, same thing. Developers there, they've got lobbyists. Pine Ridge, we're here on our own. And it's going to take all of us working together and, and, and putting forth an effort. You know, you figure, right now, we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven thousand voters in our community. Got thirty-three hundred homes. So, we, we're a pretty big voting block. And, you know, if we get together and make some noise, we, we might, they might listen. So, just something to think about.
Yes, please? I would say from a trend item, that is correct. They will, I'm sorry, um, thank you. Uh, the, the statement that was made, uh, was that the Marion County and the Levi County Commissioners were opposed or, uh, no build. And our county commissioners are the pro-growth ones that are inclined to encourage the development here. And that was the question, is that true? And that is probably a good summation of where the general tendencies are. We may be able to influence some of that, but that is where our county, our, our county commissioners sit. So, the question was, is part of our action plan to lobby the commissioners? The answer is, yes. That's, but we want to lobby on behalf of the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association. If I went there as Mark Siveska and I went up there and I'd be really talking about me and my personal brothers, I would know uh, what all the real desires are. And that's why we're trying to get that sense of the community. I doubt, if you look at, uh, the, one of the previous slides, the, the statement from, uh, the, the commission was, we're going to build it somewhere. Okay? And right now, silence is consent, because Pine Ridge has been quiet. And you'll see a lot of infringement on it. We cannot undo what has been done. But we can either influence a little bit of what's going to happen or mitigate some of the impact. I won't say that we can mitigate all of it, but I think we can mitigate some of it. I, I think we have to engage with the county commissioners on that. And that's going to be part of the plan of action. But before we start firing off people to engage with them, we need to know what we really want to have happen, because we have to be careful what we ask for, because we might get it. Yes, it is. It will be in the survey. There was a question was, will this be in the survey? And the short answer is yes. And we've not yet finalized the survey. We still have some work to do to, to be able to get these druthers. Yes, Mike?
I just don't want to waste these guys' time. So, there was a question earlier about privatizing. All right? So, let me just explain how privatizing the roads would work. Every homeowner must agree. If one disagrees, doesn't happen. Everybody who has a mortgage, your mortgage holder has to agree. So, what I'm saying is, it's not going to happen. Let's not waste any more energy on it.
That, and if, if I can identify, that was Mike, president of the, uh, the board for the, uh, Pine Ridge Property Owners Association. I'm going to hand it over to Keith here real quick.
Yeah. So, some of you guys know me and some of you don't. I build the website. I do all the newsletters. So, I'm communicating with you all the time. If you want to participate in the surveys, you must fill out, stay in touch. We have about two thousand people that are signed up. If you don't sign up, then you don't get the surveys. You don't get the process. You don't get the electronic voting, but we need you to do that. And every day, it's growing. I think we're at twenty-two hundred people right now. But that's the way we're going to communicate with the neighborhood. That's how we're going to do surveys. That's the process, because guess what? It's practically free compared to doing newsletters and emails and are doing postage. So.
Okay, back to Mark Siveska here on, on this one. I, I don't know if we have the capability, but Keith, do we have any way to get any questions from our, uh, from our Zoom community on that one? Okay? Okay, what I'd like to do, uh, is, uh, the people in this room will have the opportunity to engage with us after this is over. We only have about uh, twelve minutes left. Are there any questions out in, uh, in, uh, in, in Zoom land? If you would, please type it in chat and we'll try to answer those questions. And is, in, in, and the people that are in the audience here who would like to stay after the, uh, the eight o'clock closing, then, uh, we'll be able to answer your questions there. Please bear with us, uh, as our Zoom community's been pretty, uh, pretty, uh, uh, patient with us up to this point. So, Keith, anything from Zoom? Okay, while we wait for anybody from Zoom community, uh, please keep it down. While we wait for people from Zoom community to, to type in any questions, are there any other questions in the audience here? Yes, ma'am? Yes, what we're going to do is, uh, the question was, is there any way to get a copy of the map on how it impacts uh, Pine Ridge Properties Owners Association? The short answer is yes. We're going to try to get these briefings, uh, these slides loaded on the website. It'll be on the Pine Ridge website on news. Yeah, the lawyer has some proprietary stuff in her presentation, so we can't post that one. But all the other briefings will be on there. And, and one of the things we're going to try to do is, we're going to try to keep them up to date. So, you'll notice if you look at them one day and they're a little bit different the next day, that's because we learned a little something by going out and engaging with people. So, we're going to try to keep these things periodically up, updated, so that you'll have the latest information available to you from the website. Again, a pitch for the, the electronic, uh, uh, connectivity that we are, we're pitching. Anything from Zoom land? Okay, any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Perfect segue. He left some stuff in the back. So, if you're interested in that.
Yes. The question was, uh, the lawyer had some pictures on where the Sun Coast was actually going to run, whether it was on the east side or the west side of the, uh, the, the power lines and the right away there. Uh, the answer to the question, I think from the diagrams as it currently is, is there's going to be a portion of it on the east side that's going to clip the southwest portion of the Property Owners Association's boundaries on that one. Kind of what I did in my overview presentation. It's going to be on the east side. And pending any, pending any adjustments, we'll see what happens. It could be elevated and it could be on, you know, initially elevated and then towards the end elevated again, but uh, a large portion of it, uh, ungrade. Can, can we please hold it down? So. I would say both people would be better, but one E, one per household would be sufficient, because that'll give us a pretty good feedback mechanism. And I'm not sure how it's mechanized in the website.
Stay in touch. Everybody should be on it. It doesn't matter. It's, that's what it's for. It's to share information, even if you're not a homeowner. We don't care. If you want to know about Pine Ridge, this is, it's a public information to provide information. For, for voting, obviously, there's one voter. It's, it's represented through that process and that's managed in a different process. But you should still sign up for that whole effort as well. But in that instance, only one vote per property is the way that works. So.
I'm sorry, there was another question back here before I get to, um, pardon me. Was, was, was there a question? Yes, ma'am? It's, I, I would say, the question was, this route, or I'm sorry, I, I may have cut you off here. Yes, the, 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 kind of the, the comment was, uh, the slides indicated, uh, a, a definitive route as it's currently ongoing and then the design process is ongoing. When we, if, if you remember how Lorena addressed that, she said that this is pretty firm. They're actually acquiring property right now. But part of the design phase is when they put out that survey crew, if they get into that fine level of engineering and they go, oh, this soil is not sufficient and we need to shift it left, shift it right, uh, east or west, is the thing goes. It could change the route. So, it's what I say firm, but not final based on, you know, if they run across an Indian burial ground or there's a, an outbreak of gopher tortoises and, and all that stuff that could, that could influence the, the pathway. But it's pretty firm right now. Yes, sir? Why don't you use the mic, please?
No, it's more of an administrative question, but I got notified we were having a meeting tonight. To go out and complete this survey, do we have to sign up again on a website or open another account? Or will we get the survey if we got the meeting notification?
And yes, you, you, everybody heard the question. And, and I'm, I'm going to let Keith answer this one. I think I know what the answer is, but he's bigger than me, so I'll let him go.
All the surveys and all that stuff, if you're on, stay in touch. If you've signed up for the community, if you're one of those two thousand people, you'll receive the survey. Right? So, and if you have friends who want to be, I mean, we all should be on that stupid thing, right? So, it's the best way for us to communicate in the neighborhood about what's going on. And if you're not sure if you're on, just do it again. It ain't going to hurt. Do it five times. I don't really care. So. Because it, by the way, I won't send you five emails. You only get one email per address. So, you don't have to worry. I'm not going to bother you. So. Go to the website, go to stay in touch.
The question was, how do you get on the, uh, the website?
Go to the website, pine ridge assn.com and go to stay in touch. So, it's a really great website. So, I'm proud of it.
A lot of hard work went into that and it's probably one of our best vehicles to maintain that connectivity. Uh, yes, question, please? Phase two is, is final and complete pending litigation. There is some litigation, but as Lorena said, it's, the, the burden of really shifting things at this point is pretty steep. Or it's a pretty difficult burden for them to overcome. So, it's just how much?
All the traffic converting at Nobuk, Hawaii and Gulf Lake and Hyrum, Roll Bar is going to be a shortcut across.
Let me, let me kind of, for the folks in Zoom land, is to talk about it this way. The phase three alpha, or at least that interchange portion on Norville Bryant or 486, if I got that correct, phase two is complete. Like I said, it's gonna take it all the way up to the southern boundary of the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association, very close to the Pine Ridge Boulevard entrance to our property on that one. That's final. It's funded and pending litigation. It's not gonna move a whole lot. The litigation is how much they're gonna get for it, unless something really significant happens. There's gonna be a lot of additional traffic. That's why I pointed out the increased traffic volume and all that. Silence has been consent up to this point, and so a lot of decisions have been made that we are not gonna be able to undo. The Sun Coast is pretty much, like I said, firm. I don't know that there's anything that we're going to be able to do to adjust that. At the same time, we do have an opportunity to engage and maybe do something about it, but that's pretty firm as it sits. John, you've got a little bit more history on that particular issue, so let me hand it off to you. Here's John Hyde.
Just a point of interest, the Sun Coast exit now on Mobile Bryant will be about 1,500 feet to the east of Pine Ridge Boulevard. When that thing originally started, it was gonna be right at Pine Ridge Boulevard. And so we were able, through some of the efforts of the previous members of the committee, we were able to get that thing pushed over about 1,500 feet east, which hopefully will mitigate, hopefully those people won't be making a left to come to Pine Ridge Boulevard to then travel east on it.
So what I will say is, in, I think there was tremendous success in that little mitigation. 1,500 feet doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot. We're also going to have to make sure that, we're also gonna have to make sure that they honor that commitment, because depending on what source you look at, sometimes it has it right there at Pine Ridge. Sometimes it says 1,500 feet to the east of Pine, that the Pine Ridge entrance. And one of the things that we want to do is make sure that they honor that commitment throughout, or will have even more traffic potentially on Norville Bryant, definitely, but potentially through our neighborhood as well. And so we're gonna, we're gonna kind of press that issue to make sure that they honor that throughout. Again, Florida has that eminent domain, and they can do certain things if they, if they need to. But if we provide that common front to them, I think we should have success in that particular issue. Mike.
Earl's question. I've signed at least one version of a letter that noted that statistic, that. Yeah, so they, we have told the county, we pointed out, we attended a bunch of their, bunch of their on internet calls, and we pointed out, with the possible exception of the area near the airport, no other place has two exits within three miles. But we win.
Yeah. Some people would consider that a win, as a matter of fact, depending on what your perspective is, if you're pro-growth, or if you like the quiet that Pine Ridge offers. So that's, that's still out there as well. I think we're coming up on the end of this. Again, Bill and I'll hang around. Hopefully, we can rope John into doing the same thing, because he's got a lot of background that goes back a long way. We'll hang around and answer one of the questions. I will, I will say this, though. One of the things I would like to get from you, either in the aftermath, you know, after the meeting's over, or just shoot me an email or kick it to the website. Talking to your friends and neighbors that live in Pine Ridge, do we need a second town hall? Because that's another planning factor that we have to go through on that one. If it's needed, we'll probably do it. I'll wrestle Mike. He's a little bit smaller, but younger and stronger, so I gotta figure out how I would work that. Yes, the comment that came from Mike, the president of the board, said that we'd also like to get that input on to when is most convenient in terms of hour of the day, or maybe day of the week, you know, something along those lines, and we'll try to get that included in that. That's kind of the formal part. Thank you for coming out. I was really jazzed by seeing the number of people that were actually here. And those people that joined us via Zoom, hats off to you. Please get the word out. I think this is important to us. This has potential, large impact on us as a community. And what we're trying to do is get that sense of community, so we can engage and influence decisions downstream. The previous Roads Committee did a great job of getting some influence, and that 1,500 foot doesn't sound like a lot, but that's huge. That was really huge. And on that note, I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne for any kind of final comments.
I would just like to say thank you all for coming out. We will look forward to your answers on the survey. And everyone have a nice night. Sleep well.